Could we have roll call, please?
Gong.
Here.
Millie.
Here.
Elliot.
Here.
BS.
Here.
Whitlatch.
Here.
Here.
Eliana.
Here.
Aguilar.
Here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the Planning Commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for Planning Commission consideration. So that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak, any person addressing the Planning Commission may be limited at the discretion of the Chair. In order to be considered by the Planning Commission, testimony on public hearing items must be given at the time scheduled for the public hearing. At all times, please use the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Do we have a motion for the approval of the minutes of July 27?
I'll make that motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Gong.
Yes.
Millies.
Yes.
Elliot.
Yes.
BS.
Yes.
Whitlatch.
Yes.
Eliana.
Epstein.
Aguilar.
Okay. We have a public hearing, final site plan number PSR-16-004.
Three of us would have to recruise ourselves on the Emery Group.
Yes, could I say what it is and then you will recuse yourselves?
I think we're supposed to do that.
Even before I say what it is on the agenda, it doesn't matter? Okay.
It doesn't matter, actually, whatever you prefer.
Okay, whatever the Chair wants to do.
Okay, go right ahead and recuse yourselves.
Okay.
Just for the record, Millies, Whitlatch, and Gong are recusing themselves for A of the public final site plan number PSR-16-004.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, this is for a categorical exemption of final site plan number PSR-16-004 to provide entitlement for a $9,100 square foot general store on 39,753 square foot parcel in the C2SR general commercial site review combining zone. The site is located on property located at 41162, Road 128, State Route 63, on the east side, north of the junction with Ira Avenue in the community of Orosee. Our contact is Dana Metlin. Good morning.
Good morning Chairman Petillano and the Commissioners. Okay, the project is categorically exempt from CEQA according to Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures. And this use is applicable as this building will not exceed 10,000 square feet in floor area on a site zone for such use where unnecessary public services and facilities are available and the surrounding area is not environmentally sensitive. Entitlement is found in Section 12 of Ordinance 352, which allows by right retail stores and businesses not involving any kind of manufacturing, processing, or treatment of products in the C2 zone. However, because we have a site review overlay on this zoning, no building or relocation permit shall be issued or special use approved or grading or construction work allowed until a final site plan has been reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission. This project was noticed according to the law. And staff received one telephone call asking for clarification regarding the notice they received. And they were satisfied when informed that this was a notice by legal law and they did not have to appear here at the hearing. The project is located in the urban development boundary for the community of Orosee and the land use designation is general commercial. The project was found to be consistent with these applicable to Tulare County policies. And the project site is located here on the east side of Road 128, which is State Route 63, just south of Avenue 412 in the community of Orosee. And this is the zoning map, C2SR, general commercial site review, which the site is currently vacant and surrounding properties are zoned for commercial and residential uses. This is an aerial of the site. Lot line adjustment number PLA-16015 was submitted and processed concurrently with this project and is contingent upon approval of the final site plan. The lot line adjustment will adjust the lot line between these two parcels in order to allow sufficient area for the onsite stormwater retention basin. Is shown here on the site plan. Oops, sorry. Let's see. So we'll do lot line adjustment. This project is a $9,100 square foot general retail store that sells general merchandise. There will be eight to 12 employees and two shifts and the hours of operation are 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. seven days a week. A pylon sign is proposed to be located in the front of the store along State Route 63. The project also includes trash enclosure, landscaping, down shielding, lighting, fencing, a six-foot block wall along the north and east property lines, and chain link fencing surrounding the retention basin. This is a Google to site. The types of improvements would be water service, fire hydrants, sidewalk, paving, and driveway. Caltrans comments have been included in the conditions of approval, for example, an irrevocable offer of 15 feet of right-of-way, access to the state highway, curb and gutter, and landscaping. And staff is recommending that you approve a categorical exemption from CEQA and approve conditionally final site plan number PSR-16-004.
Thank you very much. Do any of the Commissioners have a question of?
Yes, Dana, I do. Here on the map, you see the site where the building's going to be built. Now, below that, there's a C2SR property. Do these entitlements include that property as well?
No.
It's just the site, just the property that's the site, right?
Just the property that is the site.
Okay, now, there was something about coming on to this other parcel for the retention water.
Detention basin?
Yeah.
But it shows the detention basin in the site plan, yes?
Yeah, I understand that. So I'm just trying to, a little get bit confused because we've got in our map there that property that's marked C2SR is highlighted, is might be an important part of the project.
Down here?
Yes.
That's structured, and it exists structured on that.
Yeah, I understand that. My question, I mean, my point is, I've got, I've got two parcels highlighted on my thing there. One says the site and the other one is that, and my question is, is it?
Here?
Yeah.
Okay, that's because when GIS did the maps, the mailing for this, the lot line adjustment will also be a part of that southern parcel. So in order to get the notice correctly, 300 feet, we had to use both parcels for the noticing.
Okay.
But that site is not part of this project.
Okay, so the entitlements just stay on the site, the one to the north?
Correct.
Right, okay. So now, the existing building that's down on that southern parcel, what do they do? What's going on there?
There's a commercial business.
Okay, and that has nothing to do with this?
Nothing to do with this project.
Okay.
The only highlighted that is the lot line.
Yeah, I was just confused because I saw that that parcel was highlighted and I didn't know if that was part of the entitlements or not. Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Any other questions? Okay, I will open the public hearing now. If anyone has any comments to make, good morning. Please state your name and address.
Good morning Commissioners. My name is Greg Black. I'm with Palmetto Engineering and Land Surveying. Our address is 4300 Ash Road, Suite 103 in Bakersfield, 93313. I'm here this morning on behalf of Emery Group. And just here available to answer any questions you may have regarding the site or attempt to answer any questions that you may have regarding the site. We assisted the Emery Group in the preparation of the site plan and will also be working on the civil design of the site itself. So again, be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Chairman, just, I have one. Just again, clarification on this. And I know you guys have studied a little bit on this thing here. In that community, are there any smaller stores, mom-and-pop type stores that might be impacted by the, this project? Do you know?
I do not know, sir, as the engineering technical side, that's not really something that we take a look at. I believe that would be more of the marketing and I think it was something that planning, you know, would have also considered in their review of the project as well.
Yeah, no, I mean, I have no problem with the, with the project and I think it's good and the community needs something like that there, but oftentimes there's impacts on other smaller stores and whatnot, businesses, when something like this comes in. I was just curious.
Are there sidewalks along Road 128 there on the frontage of that property?
I believe there are existing curb and gutter and sidewalk in the front there. One of our conditions, of course, is to make sure that those sidewalks are ADA compliant and if not, then we would remove and replace with ADA compliant sidewalks and drive approach.
Thank you. I have a question, more just curiosity. Are most of these dollar general stores all the same size? Or are they different sizes for different?
They have a few different sizes. For most of the projects that we've worked on in the Tulare County and South San Joaquin Valley area, this is a predominant size store that goes into 9,100 square foot. They do have slightly larger and slightly smaller footprint stores, but majority of them are around the same size.
About that size. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much for your comments. Do we have any opposition to this project that would like to speak? Oh, we do have someone. Just come up and give your name and address, please.
My name is Miguel Uftis, 41165, Road 128, Orosee. That area lies along Road 63 and there seems to be no crosswalks within, I would say, 200 feet of that area. There's a stoplight about maybe a quarter mile to the north and from there south about, I would say, a mile another street light. So that area goes about 45 miles per hour and there's no slowing traffic in that area. I want to know what's going to be done to maybe add some crosswalks for people going across the street to that location.
Very good question, thank you.
Through the Chair. Basically, it's a state highway, so that would be through Caltrans. We could alert them to your concerns, forward them. But as far as what the county can do and what, what say we have over crosswalks and stoplights, we don't have much. So it goes through the Caltrans.
Thank you for your comments. It's very interesting because usually dollar general touts that it's for walking residents, walking customers, and it's a very good point. Pretty hard to walk across that road. Thank you. Any other that would like to speak at this time? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing portion of this. And do we have any other comments from staff or?
I, I think these dollar generals work best in the areas that are walkable. And is there any way we can work that out with Caltrans to consider this in this project?
Yeah, like I said before, we will forward the comments on to Caltrans. But, and Caltrans did comment on this project and as far as stoplights and crosswalks, that was not part of their comment list, but we can comment back to them. This applicant still owes them a final site plan with irrevocable offer dedication on it and we can make those comments to, to Caltrans that the community has suggested that they add more crosswalks to that area.
Thank you. Seems like a very big need in that area. Do we have a motion for? C2SR-16-004?
Yes, I'll make a motion for categorical exemption from CEQA pursuant to Section 15303, Class 3 pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures and conditionally approve final site plan number PSR-16004.
Thank you.
Chairman, one quick question. Did you close the public hearing? I'm sorry, can?
Yes, I did.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
That's okay.
I'll second.
Elliot?
Yes.
BS.
Yes.
Eliana.
Yes.
Aguilar.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Would you please go get the three?
They took care of both.
Just a short moment while the rest of our Commissioners come back in. Must be having coffee or something in there. Get back to work.
We're back.
Thank you. This is public hearing number B, special use permit number PSP-16-019. Ari Deong and Neilia Van der Vis, close. This is a categorical exemption and special use permit number PSP-16-019 to provide entitlement for the assemblage of people for special events and weddings on a four-acre portion of the 37.14 acre site comprised of two parcels in the AE40 exclusive agriculture 40-acre minimum zone. The site is located on the north side of Avenue 328 between 128, State Route 63, and Road 132 north of the city of Icelia. And our contact again is Dana Metlin.
Project is categorically exempt from pursuant to Section 15301, Class 1 pertaining to studies. And the use of this section is appropriate as a project is compatible with this exemption because of project will utilize existing facilities. Entitlement is found in Section 16V of Ordinance Number 352, which allows assemblage of people for educational and/or entertainment purposes in the AE40 zone upon approval of a special use permit. The minimum size parcel for this use in this zone is 40 acres. There is minimum criteria to be found for approval of this type use. The first one is general plan consistency and the assemblage ordinance established, let's see, well, first, a rural valley lands plan consistency analysis was performed for the project and it was determined that the proposal is consistent with the RVLP. The second criteria is minimum acreage and the proposal is located on two parcels comprising one 37.14 acre project site. And this 37.14 acre site is a sectional 40 acre parcel, therefore, the minimum acreage is met in this zone. The compatibility with neighboring land use, surrounding properties contain rural residences and agriculture. A condition of approval will require that the applicant notify adjacent property owners when an event will occur so that adjacent property owners may adjust their agricultural operations accordingly. And the site itself does contain active agricultural access is direct to Avenue 328. Private farm road provides access to the special events area and a condition of approval will require that all access roads be maintained to allow emergency vehicle access to the special events area. And the last criteria is that it not be detrimental to general welfare. And this special use is conditioned to preclude the project being detrimental to the health, safety, peace, morals, comfort, and general welfare of persons residing in the neighborhood. For example, conditions will control the hours of operation, noise, parking, and other effects, possible effects. There is a section of the assemblage of ordinance that states that this is a, must be 40 acres. And so I put up this assessor's map to show you that this is a sectional 40 because this is the south half of Section 5, this area here. And this is the west half of section, of the south half of Section 5. And this is a quarter of the south, of the west half of the south half. So that's a quarter of, that is what makes this compliant with the 40 acre minimum. The project was noticed according to the law and staff has received two letters in opposition to this project. I've been provided with these letters and I believe that these individuals will provide testimony.
And we did receive them emailed, so.
Did?
Yes, we did.
The project is located in the rural valley lands plan. Land use element is valley agriculture. The project was found to be consistent with the applicable policies within the plan. This parcel is also in agricultural preserve under the Williamson Act and the Williamson Act conformity analysis was applied and it was determined that this proposed use is compatible with the Williamson Act. The project is located on the north side of Avenue 328 between 128 and 132. And correspondence from the Tulare County Farm Bureau was received and conditions of approval addressed their concerns, which were notification of adjacent property owners regarding farming practices, maintenance of the, maintaining the intensity of the use, not allowing it to intensify beyond what is permitted, providing security for the events, and parking. Project is located in the AE40 zone and contains one single family residence and additional structures like a barn, pool. All of the surrounding properties are in the AE40 zone and contain rural residential uses and agriculture. An aerial view of the project site. This is the concept plan for this use permit. The area where the special events will occur is back here along the pond area. And this is approximately four acres back here and it's set back more than 1,000 feet from Avenue 328. The nearest residence is down here, approximately 600 feet from this, from the, actually, the restrooms, the portable restrooms, 600 feet. The facility would operate between the months of March through June and October through November. The hours would be approximately 2:00 p.m. until 11:00 p.m. There would be four to eight employees to help with setup and takedown of the facility. Amplified music would be turned off at 10:00 p.m. There would also be a barrier in this area to prevent any of the patrons from entering the orchard or other properties in the area. The site plan was changed from the original site plan. Originally, they had parking along the eastern side of this property and once the applicant was notified of the opposition, the site plan was changed and the parking will now be along the western boundary of this property. And in the future, they, if necessary, they can remove some of the trees in the orchard to allow for additional parking. But this is their property along here. And there's another neighbor about 1,500 the southwest on the other side of Avenue 328 that also sent in a letter.
Were any of these neighbors ones who wrote letters of opposition?
Pardon me?
Letters of opposition received, there's two. Are these the residences that we see on the map?
This is one residence here and the other one is actually down here.
Were these the same residences that wrote the letters? Okay, thank you.
This is all mature walnut and this is newly planted orchard here. And as mentioned, this is the area where the portable bathrooms will be.
Through the Chair, let it also be noted, there's a seasonal creek canal between the two properties as well.
This is the revised site plan illustrating that the parking will be along this eastern portion of the property. Staff is recommending that your commission approve a categorical exemption consistent with CEQA and conditionally approve special use permit number PSP-16-019. And that concludes staff's report.
Thank you.
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Yes, please.
Dana, could you put the map back up, that over, well, that, yeah, that one right there. It says parking for 80 vehicles right through there.
Yes.
Are they gonna, part of the condition is to have some sort of transportation, ground transportation to get the people over there or are the people gonna walk all the way around here?
To my knowledge, they would be walking, but.
And that, is that a paved, is that area paved?
No, it's not paved.
So they're gonna be walking through the dirt for up to a quarter mile?
Well, that's the plan. Applicant may be able to, you know, give you more information about that.
Okay.
When the applicant comes up, we'll have that question.
So I'm still confused with this map about the boundaries. So where is north, where is south? On that colored map with the pictures?
This is north, north in this direction.
They don't own that.
Well, we made the map this way so that you can see the whole site, otherwise it didn't really fit on the, in the picture.
It's 328.
Down here, right here.
But the residence is a separate parcel?
Yes, yes. This is a separate parcel. This was a home site parcel that was created a couple of years ago, but they're owned by the same individuals. And if the properties are adjacent, we can use those adjacent properties to make the total acreage.
Guy who owns the residence didn't write a letter against this project.
This individual wrote a letter.
Over there, not the one that says residence. Okay.
Property owner of this property.
Okay, okay, another, okay. I got it.
Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing at this time with the proponent. Like to make comments or anyone for the proponent?
My name is Haley Van der Vis and I live at 25948 Row 92 in Tulare. And so in order to address. And so in order to address your question about transportation, we will put gravel down on that driveway, and yes, we will have transportation. And I apologize for that not being in the stipulations. So, but we will have transportation from the parking area to the actual event area.
Makes sense.
So, I also wanted to address some issues that the letters of obligation addressed. And one of the concerns in the letters was that having an event area here was not conducive with the AE forty zoning. But that is why we'd be applying for a special use permit, which would allow for an event or an area such as this in the AE forty zone. Another concern was unauthorized persons in the grove. So in the neighbor's grove, which is an orange, orange driven, they're certified for food safety, or they have that certification. And so, but one of the requirements is that we will have one security personnel per one hundred guests. So that would help with that. And also Matthews Canal separates the two properties as well. And also, we will have a barrier separating a fence or something like that to keep the guests in their area, to make sure they don't wander around to other properties.
So, can I ask you, a barrier? So, do you know what type of barrier you plan at this time for that, or?
A fence, maybe pick a fence, something you can take up and down, because he will need, it will need to be removed so he can continue with farming when he needs to.
Okay, thank you.
Another one of their concerns was dust from excess vehicles. But I have access to a water truck, so if the dust gets to the issue, we will be able to go through with the water truck and spray the roads before any events. They got another concern about trash and contamination of any kind. But one of the stipulations in the permit is that we have our trash taken away by a licensed waste hauler and be disposed, not be disposed out of county landfill, fill or recycle. And as well, operating a venue requires that you keep it very nice and clean. So I don't think trash would be an issue, and as well, you have the Matthews ditch that would separate the two properties. That's a barrier. Another concern was that this venue would be a threat to serious farming operations as a result of special events and weddings. This, the permit requires that I present all of our neighbors with a list of the scheduled events we have, so that we will be able to work together in regards to spraying schedules and ag operations such as those.
I have a question on that, Ms. Vandervis. Let's say you have an event for October tenth planned. And I know that these are planned months, months.
Yes.
And your farmer comes and tells you, your neighbor, that he has to spray that day. What's the plan?
I would not know. We would have to work that out together.
Because you did sign, or you will sign, a right to farm.
Yes.
Plans, so, okay.
Is the purpose of the calendar for the agricultural people or for her clients? Because if the ag person knows the calendar, they wouldn't schedule it on that day.
Yeah, or wonder if they have to, even though.
Well, I don't know if they happen to saying that, that could be what the calendar's for.
Well, Nancy, when do you sweep for walnuts? I mean, that's like a dust storm out there. When's that happen?
Well, it will be one of your walnut farmers, which I'm not, could answer this, but I'm gonna say October, November?
They're the ones that own the walnuts.
They're going to October.
The other ones are orange trees, they're citrus.
Orange trees.
So they're the ones that own the walnuts, so they would control that.
Oh, they own the, you own the walnuts.
So during that harvesting season, we probably just wouldn't have any.
Just have that event there.
And then another one of their concerns was that, because I was not a resident at this property, that any negative impacts on them would not directly negatively impact me. But because I own the venue, and because that would be my business, if I would get in trouble from the county, that would directly impact me as well. So that would address that concern. Whatever impacts them impacts me as well.
You'll be there at every event?
Yes, I will.
Oh, a question?
Sorry, Nancy, thank you.
Anyone else have questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any, any other proponents of the project? That would be for the project?
I guess.
Okay, please come on. Give your name and address, please.
Good morning. I'm Philip Corpega, and I live on one three zero one seven Avenue three twenty eight, right across the street from the road. The first question that I have is if, have we allowed Mr. DeYoung to get, to build whatever he's building? And he doesn't even have the forty acres that he's required to have. That means that if I acquire another thirty acres somewhere around the neighborhood, and I, and I decide to do something like what he's trying to do, are we gonna make some kind of a special exemption? One other question. The other thing, when my brother and I moved right across the street, that's the reason we moved out of town, because we wanted to move into a peaceful place, a nicer area, less noise, less traffic. And now, it seems to me like we wanna, we wanna allow somebody to mess us up. The other thing about four or five years ago, Mr. DeYoung, I had a couple of functions at my house during the day. He turned me in, because I was too noisy. I was making too much noise with my music. And it was about five o'clock in the afternoon. And so the cops came out and made me stop my music. Now, he's trying to do completely the opposite. So I'm totally against it. Like I said again, I, that's the reason I live there, where I live. My brother lives right next door, and he feels the same way. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much for your comments. Are there any other opposition comments at this time?
Good morning. I am Pat Sprutenberg, and this is my husband, William. And we live directly next door to this proposed venue. We live at one three zero one two Avenue three twenty eight in Visalia. And we own the citrus grove right next door. We also own the road from Arbor Way to Ben Maddox. We own the corner property, which was the last purchase we made to, in addition to our property. And that was specifically, it used to be a Christmas tree farm, sale of trees out of that corner. And we purchased it so that we would have control for our farming and agriculture of that corner. And there were several people that were trying to purchase it for a tire shop, mini mart, some type of store or retail outlet there. So we purchased it, and with the approval of most of our neighbors, because they knew we were serious farmers. We want to protect the integrity of the agriculture and the farming in our neighborhood. So, the applicant, Vandervis, has countered with remedies for our concerns. First of all, there are no structures. They said they would be using existing structures. There's no structures. It's all soft, powdery dirt road. There is no compacted soil anywhere. And that was also right along our property. It's all very powdery. And we, we have to work very hard to keep, right now, the way it is existing, to keep the dust from rolling across our grove. We are certified in the food safety program, which is something that citrus has had to get on board with recently, in recent years. And dust is a major, major problem for dust mites and other insects that thrive in that environment. So we work very hard to keep our growth clean and, and keep our certification. Without our certification, we can't market our fruit now. We have to have that in place. So the other thing that was brought up was about the event schedule. It really doesn't matter what schedule they have. When we, when it's announced in the morning for us that certain spray has to take place, we have to get it done that evening. And if there's a venue scheduled, it doesn't matter how far in advance we know, when that, when it comes time for us to need to spray, we have to spray. Without that, we don't get our certification, because it doesn't, the paperwork, we have to show proof that we have sprayed within the window, the parameter, and it's very small. Sometimes it's a few days. But when you're lining up, we contract a sprayer to do the commercial spraying for us. And when you're dependent on someone else to do that, they have to, you have to take it when they can do it. And sometimes you need to do it that evening, when it's calm, when the winds calm down, when there's no people around, and it has to be done. So for us, you could give us a schedule two years in advance of the events that are gonna be happening there. And if, if on that day we have to spray, we're, we have the right to spray. I mean, we don't like the thought of people being in the vicinity when we have to spray it. But normally, they would not be there. So that's, for us, we can't, we can't have it. We can't lose our certification. And we are required to do, take the necessary steps to keep that in place. Without it, our packing house will not, we can't get our fruit marketed. It just would, we'd be at the mercy of peddlers, I guess, which it's, farming is, and it's expensive. And you have all these cultural costs before you get any income, obviously. So that really, the answer from them to give us a schedule ahead of time doesn't really help, help us in that regard. Also, we live on three twenty eight, and we are already battling trespass and trash. There's people coming into the grove. You know, we can monitor the front, the three twenty eight, we're, we live up close there, so. And we're family farming, there's three of us, me, the husband, and our son, Will. And I am on the spray rig many, many a day. I, I'm one of the farmers with my husband and my son. So we all work very hard to keep a nice, clean, tidy, safe, and certified grove. And that's our livelihood. That's, that's what we do. For the existing structures of which there are none, and no paved roads, no compacted roads, nothing in their application is really viable yet, because they haven't done any of those things that could keep the dust down. And this is a long forty. It's not a nice square. It's narrow, and it's long, and the dust, even for what they're claiming their parking would be now on the west side, there's no road there, and that drive is in dispute. The people that own that property right next to DeYoung's on this side have claimed that as their own agricultural drive. Grubers. Now, I don't know if they responded here, or I don't even know if they were notified of this, because our neighbors across the street were not notified of this hearing and of the situation. So we don't really know if they knew or not. But that road does not belong exclusively to DeYoung's. They have prescriptive rights. So I don't know that they can pave it, or gravel it, or really do anything to it. But again, our main, our main points are, it will impact, impact our farming negatively. And we, we just can't lose our certification. The barrier that they're going to put up right between our properties, it's owned by the ditch company, and they come in and they, they dig out the ditch every year because of the silt and whatever that fills it when it's running. It just doesn't run very, it doesn't run all year long. It's just when they let the water out of the lake. So they come in and they grade that, and it has to be, they bring big equipment in there so that they can't really have vehicles parking there, or really claim it for use for their venue. So for so many reasons that are just not in keeping with good agricultural practices and protection of, we, we really want to protect the ag land there. We researched that before we purchased that property, that it was ag, and that we would be able to farm there in good, you know, in good faith, and not have any venues of any kind that could, at the, at the time we purchased it, we'd been farming there for thirteen years. It was, the requirements of us, the restrictions, were not as great as they are now. So we wanna, we wanna keep, you know, the pristine nature of our farming in place and intact. And it would really be difficult with so much traffic and people and noise. My husband's in bed by eight, eight thirty at the latest every night. And that would really disrupt him during the winter. You know, we're running wind machines, and he's, he's gotta get his rest. So I know they're not, the venue's not scheduled to run during the winter, but it's close, and it can start in November for us. We can not have a good Thanksgiving sometimes. So anyway, yeah, we just, we oppose it, and we really hope that you will uphold, you know, the, the ordinances in the zone in place to protect agriculture and farming land.
Thank you.
Did I ever get anything?
The creek on the east side of the property, it's a ditch. And I'm seventy-three years old, and I have no problem traversing the ditch. And it's basically flat, there's no big borders on it. It, you know, they grade it with gritter. Another thing is there's nothing in place, there's no bond required, that if we have, if we can't market our fruit, you know, and it gets specialty citrus, high dollar fruit, and you have a half a million dollar bond to protect us if we can't get this certification. And I don't agree with food safety, but all you need is, if a dog, excuse me, took a crap out there, that's, it doesn't affect the true fruit, it's not on the fruit. You know, they're afraid somebody's gonna step in it, they climb the ladder, it gets on their hands, they take the fruit. And although citrus has never had a problem, we have to go by these rules. And if, when the auditor comes out there, and he finds trash or anything like that, we don't get a certification. All these big markets, Walmart, Costco, they will not buy fruit or any produce, anything today, if they do not have that certificate of certification that, when they have a recall, that they can go back down the road, find out who caused it. Another thing is that spraying, a lot of times they'll pull the tractors in, and we, we have no control. It has to be sprayed, Korea buys, probably buys fifty percent of the fruit. And like with that dockster, man, we got, we lost big time. But they require that, at a certain date, the fruit has to be sprayed with a certain chemical. And then a month or two later, it, you know, it has to be sprayed again. If those dates are not correct, they will not accept the fruit. And so that, that's why that spraying is so critical. And it's usually done in the evening when it's cool. It's a vegetable oil that they put in to, in the spray to adhere to the trees. And if it's done in the sunlight in the daytime, it burns the trees. So, and then, even though they say we, you know, if we need to spray it here on Thursday, which sounds good, well, many times there's a breeze comes up, there's a sprinkle, and the tractor sit there until compatible to do spraying. So, and then, like fertilizer and other things, a lot of this, we have contracted out, and we don't really have control. They bring it out, and if, when they're able to do it, they, they do this. They bring it out, and if, when they're able to do it, they, they do this. Then, uh, the wind machines come on and mostly in the wintertime, that may not impact it, but, uh, it would blow the pride away.
Thank you very much for your comments.
I have a question, question?
Yep, one moment, there is a question, so.
Do you know how much distance there has to be from your property when you spray? Because it looks like there's a barrier there between your property and where the venue will be.
Where they plan on having, there's nothing there, oh, there is a hole right now. And they plan to fill that, what I understand?
No, there's trees right there.
Well, how we're not sure is...
He's talking about the trees, Bill.
Dana, where, where is their property on here relative to this project?
We're only looking at maybe a hundred feet.
Is that it?
And how much distance does there have to be when you're spraying, is my question?
I, I'm not real sure, but it's, uh...
He's asking, how much drift are you allowed?
Yeah.
That's why we spray when there is no drift. We can't, we can't do that.
You're not allowed any drift, I don't think.
Their property is the trees on, right there.
That little corner?
You have to spray.
The whole thing on there, it's, huh?
Late at night, you know, you can, uh...
Or in the evening.
Yeah, so, yeah, so my question is if, if they, if there's no drift, why would it affect their venue?
Well, that is really a big risk. All you need to have, if they're, if they're spraying, and somebody says they're sick, it's all over. You know, you don't...
We really don't need a hundred or two hundred people back there.
How many acres do you have in citrus? How many acres in citrus? How many acres do you have? How many acres do you have in citrus?
Right here.
Sixty-five acres here, and I have other growths all up.
This is not sixty-five acres.
Sir, is yours the...
I mean, twenty-five acres.
Is yours that rectangular block on the east side of that ditch? Is that what that is? Show me where that broad block is.
Right there.
That's them.
Okay.
The whole length. Yeah.
And go all the way over to Ben Maddox, which it doesn't...
And the certification is, uh, you're organic, is that why you're certified?
No.
What is it? I'm not, I'm not familiar with it.
Food safety.
We're, that certification covers us.
You did a very good job of explaining that, a very good job.
Our fruit is viable for sale, for marketing and safe for people.
And all of them have to be certified now.
I can agree with all of their, their little rules that, uh...
Have to live with them.
Yeah.
If a worker steps in something contaminated, one of his, the contractor's rules, the picker is not supposed to touch the rungs. He has to climb holding the sides. Because if he steps in something, it goes on the rungs, it goes on his hands, it goes on cherries. Cherries are not water. You know, bone out the teeth, there you go. But if they have that problem, we have to go by the same rules.
They've included citrus now with that.
The packing house, a couple of years ago, it was an option, you belonged to fruit safety or not. Now, you have to be in food safety, they even notified us. They will only work with one food safety, uh, group of us.
What's the active ingredient in the spray? What's that?
There's thousands. The active ingredient is in the spray, there's difference.
It can be, uh...
Hundreds.
Most of it, I kept thinking of all the names, uh, you know, they're not using the real...
But it's to kill the pests?
It's used to use...
Maybe, it's a lot of different things.
You know, one of the sprays is a lime spray, uh, and everybody gets harmless because we live right in the grove. Uh, another spray, uh, is, uh, gerbilsac acid and two-four D. And that just, uh, delays the churning of the fruit. And then the other sprays, uh...
Are for pests.
I think it always doesn't make it change so fast. But, uh, some of the sprays, uh, offer either be not to wear a suit or even a respirator, even if it's in a, they have a boat tractor. And so, and contractor, if there's a group of people nearby, people not spraying. And it, and it doesn't mean everyone's asleep like, you know?
Right.
Something wandered off. People are always looking for, uh, reaching for a suit, so...
We, we practice safe farming and, but with added people around our grove, it makes it much harder for us to comply with everything that we have to comply with. So, this really is not a good fit for a wedding venue. And then the other activities, they have already held, I can't, I don't even know how many. They've been back having some type of gatherings back there already. And we have already had increased trash and debris in our grove as a result of it. It looks like it's a long distance from our grove. It is not. It's just right across the ditch and the wind blows our way some, you know? Most of the time, in the evenings when it's calm, it's, you know? That's what we look for when we need to spray. But right now, we've already, um, suffered a lot of trash just with the parties that they've already been having back there, so.
You have a venue on four fifty-five, and you see the surprise. I near gave you, uh, the field, I have to check every mixture. And I find pieces of fireworks, actually. There are not only paper plates and trash that's blown into the grove, but from these area fireworks, whatever. Uh, I'm picking up these pieces of trash also.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You have another speaker and your name and address, please.
I'm Kevin Caskey. I live at one-two-eight-four-three Avenue three-twenty-eight in Tulare County. After the military, I came back to Visalia. And I had purchased a large portion of the ranch that I own today while I was in the military. And I've had that ranch since nineteen sixty-six, sixty-five. I moved with my wife to our residence in nineteen seventy. And at that time, the, uh, the traffic along Avenue three-twenty-eight was not very much. Today, it is tremendous. If you travel Avenue three-twenty-eight, you will know that. It is a zoo. Uh, RMA has a problem with the, with the road out there. They patch it. Um, and the speed along there is tremendous. People coming out of Ivanhoe will come to Avenue, uh, Road one-thirty-two and pick it up going out to the highway, which is, uh, Road one-twenty-four. While we've lived there, we've been burglarized four times in our house. We've had equipment stolen from our ranch. And it, it's a major problem out there. To the west of us is the Patterson Track where we have bottle rockets, first January, July fourth, and they all aim towards the east, which is really a problem.
Kevin Caskey, could you show us, is your property on that map there?
Yes. He's pointing to my house right there. And then, in the back, to the south a little bit, is the ranch property. No, yeah, there you go.
And the bottle rockets came from what area?
From the left.
There.
Mm-hmm. The noise coming from the Patterson Track every Saturday night is tremendous. The noise which be, would be coming from the existing site when they have events probably will be a problem. I came out there because it was an agricultural zone, AE forty. At the time I came in nineteen sixty-six, the Tulare County zoning ordinances were zero. They were not enforced. Since that time, the zoning ordinances have been stronger because we've had some pretty good people involved in the county administration. But today, I see that some of the activities which are being conducted are not necessarily within, uh, good, sound judgment. And I feel strong about agricultural zones, AE forty particularly. Our property is enrolled in the Williamson Act. And if I wanna change my property in any manner, I have to relinquish my right in the Williamson Act. And I will then have to pay property taxes, extraordinary property taxes. I really think that, now, across the street to the, to the property adjacent to the site is now planted walnuts. And the people that own that are the Gruber family. The Grubers will undoubtedly, uh, be spraying and harvesting those walnuts. Those, those walnuts happen to be, um, Ivanhoes, which will be coming off in October, later on in October. And it, it's gonna be a problem. Dust is gonna be a problem. I am totally opposed to this project. I think it should remain as it is, uh, an agricultural activity. I believe that what they want to do is put a commercial activity on an, in an agricultural zone, which I definitely feel is wrong. If they wanted to have an agricultural business, I probably would not be opposed to it. But being that I see that this is a commercial business, I am absolutely opposed to it. That concludes my points. Any questions? I'll be able to have to answer them.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Madam Chair, could I have a break for about three minutes?
Um, yes, we can take a break.
I apologize.
That's okay, we can take a break, please, uh, we're going to...
Go for it.
We will now reconvene the public hearing portion of PSR sixteen dash zero zero, I'm sorry, uh, PSP sixteen dash zero-one-nine. And we have another comment, please? Thank you. And if you could just limit your comments to what hasn't been covered, thank you.
My name is Magdalena Orte and I live three-twenty-eight, one-three-zero-four, one Avenue three-twenty-eight. And you know, I've been living like twenty-four years in the property. And we're okay right now, but you know, you let, we let them do that kind of stuff. With the big weddings, parties, and you know, after people start to drink, fights and shooting. And you know, most, lately, most of those things, they have shooting. And we neighbors and we, I don't think we like that kind of stuff, so.
Thank you very much for your comments. One second, one second, one sec, well, well, just one moment. I'll ask, that's, thank you very much. If there's anyone else that is in opposition that would like to speak, and if not, then if we could please have rebuttal, thank you. Just gotta get it straight.
Okay, so one of the points that I wanted to bring up was...
Oh, I'm sorry, your name and address again.
Haley Vandervis, I live at two-five-nine-four-eight Road ninety-two Tulare, California. One of the points that I wanted to bring up was that, to my knowledge, the property line from Gruber ends at his orchard and the dirt road is, belongs, belongs to Addie DeYoung. Another thing that I wanted to point out was the parking will not be on the dirt road. There's probably a twenty-foot space between the end of the orchard and before the dirt road begins. The vehicles will be parked there, the dirt road would only be used for transporting people to the venue area.
Excuse me, I, okay, that was confusing to me. Can you show us then? I thought they were gonna be parking all along the dirt road.
Well, what I'm trying to say is that, so the dirt road, between the dirt road and where the trees begin, there's a twenty-foot grass area. And the vehicles will be parking on that grass.
Okay, thank you.
And, um, I also wanted to say that if the Sprenkens are really concerned about the dust, what we can do is lay gravel down on all the roads that will be in operation or in use at that time. We can put that in the stipulations for the permit to take care of that issue. Another thing I wanted to say was, Ms. Sprenkberg laid out that, or pointed out that, um, Addie DeYoung was having parties there already, but to my knowledge, those are just family gatherings. He's never had any major parties there. And when I will, if I will be operating this, I will make sure that there will be no trash that'll end up on their property because that would put me liable for a fine as well from the county if they would report me for that. Um, and then another thing I wanted to say was that Ms. Sprenkberg was saying that when they spray, the day that they get called to spray, they have to spray that day. But then Mrs. Sprenkberg, Mr. Sprenkberg said that, um, sometimes they will have to hold off the spraying due to a sprinkle or there's too much wind. So what I wanna ask is if they're able to hold off spraying for one day till the sprinkle is gone or the wind has died down, why wouldn't they be able to hold off one day for a venue or a wedding that would happen if those two, if their spraying schedule and our schedule would conflict? So, I just wanted to point that out. Um, and I believe that is it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And anyone else that would like to speak at this time? If not, I am going to close the public comment period. And are there any comments from the commission?
Well, I didn't really understand that the food we eat is, is for the most part certified, so that's kind of reassuring that someone is doing that. This is not like for special export or anything. This is just the standard certification to make sure the citrus is clean. Is that correct, Nancy?
Um, to a point, there is, it's really tied to trade. I, I can't get into all of it, but there are different levels of certification. And there's some citrus that is very, very highly controlled. And then some that maybe isn't as much. Yes, it is all certified, safe before you get it in the stores. All of your fruits and vegetables are, in the United States.
I think I understand that. Thank you for the explanation.
I like the idea of the gravel, can that be a condition then?
Through the chair, if I, if I may, just for a couple of points for clarification. Yes, um, as far as, first of all, noticing, the noticing was put out to everybody the same way. So, if, if there was, there was some speculation that people didn't get noticed, the noticing went out the same way to all property owners in, within that map area. Second, the Patterson Track impacts of shooting bottle rockets and noise really has nothing to do with this particular project. The AE zoning, which is in place for agriculture, the, the, the ordinance code allows for the assemblage of people, that's why, that's why they're going through this process. So, it, it does allow for assemblage of people, meaning criteria and, and, and those. So, otherwise, there wouldn't even be an issue, we wouldn't be here because they are trying to, um, start this venue based on the ordinance code. The noise limits that were also talked about, Patterson Track, when there's noise, it's unchecked when you're in a community or someone just doing this. This will have conditions of when, uh, decibel levels and times and hours of when it has to be shut off and, and can't operate. So, there's, there's, there's conditions associated with that as opposed to someone in the neighborhood just blaring music where you're calling a sheriff. Here, there's conditions in place. And then, spot, speaking of conditions as well, we can, um, and, and I might propose that we do a continuance of this matter, that we can try to strengthen some of the concerns. I know that the concerns are, are trespass, trash, noise, and dust. We can look at exactly what we're talking about as far as the, the conditions on, on the surfacing of the roads, parking area. Also, the fencing could be designed in such a manner that it would, would, wouldn't allow trash blowing over, wouldn't allow the people. Maybe we could look at some, some of that. Maybe we could do that and maybe, uh, have a, a fresh approach on strengthening some of these conditions based on the concerns of the neighbors.
About the calendar also. Now that I hear what I hear, um, maybe you do this in reverse and that is if the Spryten, is it Spritenberg, is my pronouncing that correct? Spretenberg? Uh, they have a calendar for spraying...
Spruttenberg, they have a calendar for spraying and whatever farming activities they do. Maybe they can, you know, exchange that so that the scheduling of events complies with that rather than the other way around.
There's, and I appreciate that. There's always going to be challenges because of weather conditions and...
Yeah, sure.
And all that. But I would, I would, I would greatly invite both parties, the concerned neighbors as well as the applicant, to meet with county staff and discuss this and try to see if, see if accommodations can be reached that would be satisfactory for all the parties. One other comment that Mr. Aguilar had, it's approximately a 200-foot setback. As proposed right now, you're about 200 feet back from the area where the events will be held. It's approximately 200 feet west of the canal and the property line.
Michael.
One, one, one comment, Michael. I'd kind of like to see maybe address at least the situation if, in fact, the Spruttenbergs are at risk of losing their certification from their packer or processor and that is documented. And in fact, that risk is actually documented, that it is coming from the activities here, that we need to address what, what would happen, what needs to happen there because we cannot stand to have them lose their certification. That's not what we're here for.
Certainly. And I don't think the applicant is looking for that either. I know some of the concern was animals getting, dogs getting into this. Obviously, we can add additional restrictions to, to the conditions of people, no pets being brought on, that's one thing. But then maintaining people in a certain area so that they don't migrate across open fields and across orchards. As well as, we can look at what, what the applicant's contract with the brides as far as restrictions. So it's identified in their contract saying that if this can't happen, they need to keep people here and, and have that as part of that to build some further...
Right. And we need some disclosures probably as to the fact that they're farming out here and then you might be exposed to odors and sprays and dust and stuff like that.
There's a right to farm in here.
No, we're talking to the people contracting for...
Right.
Yes, yes. Contracting for the venue.
Yeah.
Exactly. So they've got to be advised. And I don't know if you can get by with a whole harmless on a deal like that, but I'd try.
Michael, I'm...
Go ahead.
I'm back in the subdivision business and so we have a lot of tough restrictions when we go out onto busy roads. 328 is a very, very busy north, east-west, heavily traveled road. And, you know, it would seem that in my subdivision, subdivider hat, that where you enter 328, you had 100 cars back there. You know, there should need to be things made for stacking of cars and so that people also can see you, if you're going on 328 either way, can see that there are cars there. So, you know, that's, that's all, you've just created a road that enters into 328 and it needs to be addressed like a road into a shopping center or out of a subdivision. I mean, I have a big concern about the traffic where it enters into 328.
The other concern I've got a little bit is all these, all these cars are going to be headed in, parking in a northerly direction probably, and then they got to get turned around. Are they going to be turning around on Gruber's property to get turned around? You know, I mean, so I think there needs to be, that has to be addressed as well. I think gravel probably isn't adequate. I think, I don't know, maybe language like an all-weather surface or something like that needs to go to...
Yeah, that's, that language is actually already in as a condition of approval.
All right.
But is gravel considered an all-weather surface? I think it isn't. I have a road next to me right now that's gravel and I have dust coming down from it.
Yeah, that doesn't last very long. It disappears on the first grain. You push it right down into the dirt.
I have a question on the right to farm notice. I've read it 50 times nauseam sitting here and it's just, it's real wishy-washy. And so, and I know it's a very good document. I just, what does it mean about the in operation for more than three years? Do they mean the farming operation or do they mean the... If you read, read the last sentence, which is real long. Everyone should do this. Everyone should look this up, this right to farm notice. It's Tulare County's right to farm notice. It's a very important document. You have an answer?
What was, what was the specific question?
Who are they talking about? The operation for more than three years?
I, I believe in, well, we have a legal counsel here as well.
Oh, we do have a legal counsel here.
So I could defer, but I would just, I'll stick my two cents in. It appears that it, they're talking about establishing of new agricultural uses or not nuisances if they've been there for more than three years. So, so it's protecting the long-term operations of existing agricultural operations that they are not considered nuisances.
If they, if they've been there for three years, yeah.
They're not considered nuisances to any neighboring property owner. So if conceivably a neighbor was going to put a tire shop there, let's say it was zoned for that right next door, that doesn't mean, you know, really the tire shop's the one that's going to have to deal with more conditions and such. The neighbors are still going to be able to farm, spray, do what they need to do. Of course, that's general and there are some restrictions on spraying too close to housing. But yeah, it's just to protect Tulare County's farmers. And the reason it's included in something like this is just to put everyone on notice that even if you were going to do something like have weddings on a piece of farm property, that doesn't mean that the neighboring farm will become a nuisance to you and what you conduct there on your property, which would be a wedding or an event.
Thank you. Just wanted to get that clear.
One more question. I didn't notice that we limit the number of events per year typically. Did I miss that? How many events per...
On the conditions...
What was the numbers?
It, it's not a number, it's dates.
It says the hours, but it doesn't say the number of events.
It's months, right. There's, in the conditions, it's the months that she was going to do business.
Not number of events.
No, not a number.
What else we were, you know, we require that they can only...
There is a number. There is a number. It's 12.
Oh, 12.
And that's over a six-month period. That's a lot. That's a lot.
Is that true, staff? 12?
I didn't...
12. In the development standards that was adopted with this ordinance?
Oh, in the standards. Oh.
Through the chair on page 24, under development standards, assemblage of people, number four, within any, within any single calendar year, the same property may host no more than 12 special events.
Well, it's a per year.
Okay. Thank you. Is that clear to everyone?
One more thing about the right to farm notice, just to point out, it's not necessarily, it's not an assumption of the risk or anything like that. It doesn't release anyone from liability. So the farmers are concerned in case someone does inhale something and sues them. This document wouldn't, just because it puts people on notice that the farm is a nuisance, it doesn't release them from liability for what that's worth.
Thank you. That's good to know. I'm sorry, I closed the public comment period.
She got to, I wanted to counter her response. So I didn't get...
No, we're not going to be in a...
No, no, because we, she did, she countered inside the public comment, so, except for her answer to a question. So I'm sorry, but, okay.
On, on that document for the assemblage of people, it does say on there a minimum of 300 feet? And are we saying this is only 200 feet?
Good catch.
As proposed right now.
As proposed.
And, and as I said, we've, they've redesigned the proposed for the parking area to change the location of that to, to, as the concerns of the neighbors, so.
Okay. Are we ready to, for a motion?
Well, did, did I hear staff suggest that we do a continuation?
I suggested if, if the applicant and the, and the neighbors are open for to sit immediately, you think that would be a worthwhile endeavor, I would recommend that we continue the matter until September 14th.
I'll try to at least once.
If that's the way that...
I think there's enough issues that that would be appropriate.
As chairman, I feel like I'm confused and I think there's a lot of issues here that, I'm not saying that they can be solved, but that I think there's things that need to be addressed and maybe they're not addressed in, in this. Feel the same?
Well, with that, I'll make a motion that we continue this to Vilma.
September 14th.
September 14th, 2016.
I'll second the motion.
Go. The vote, please. Millies?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
BS?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
No.
Eleano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Will be continued to time certain. Did you say September?
September 14th.
14th. And this will not be re-noticed, right? Correct? Correct. Thank you for your time and your comments.
So is that true that the items that is discussed with the parties, you reopen the public comments to address the items that were discussed, but only those, nothing that's been discussed?
Just the new, right?
Yeah, new stuff. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. We have item number C, special use permit number PSP 16-027. Nina Clancy and Brad Gilton, categorical exemption and special use permit number PSP 16-027 to amend PSP 10-044 and allow the expansion of an existing preschool through the addition of 2,600 square feet of classroom space on a 1.7 acre parcel in the AE-20 exclusive agriculture 20-acre minimum zone. The site is located on the west side of Acres, approximately 250 feet north of Caldwell Avenue and in the unincorporated area of Visalia. And Dana Metlin is our contractor.
Madam Chair, just, I want to check with counsel on the thing there. I've known Mrs. Clancy for over 20-some years. My children went to preschool at her school, but that was 20 years ago and I've had no business dealings and I don't think I can be, I think I can be objective on this. What do you think?
Yes, sir, that's fine. If you haven't had any business dealings and you're just friends and as long as you haven't discussed this project specifically with her, then you're fine.
Thank you.
I also have a confession. I do a lot of business at the city of Visalia and I was talking with the chief planner, Josh McDowall, McDonald. Always get his last name confused and I just had noticed that there was no comment from the city. And so I asked him and he said that the city was okay with this project because the city, rightfully so, is doing it to city standards.
Through the chair, we've had a couple of conversations with Josh McDonald and he has not, except for an email, responded with a no comment. So, in, in every case, we've gone back to him three times just to make sure.
Okay.
Thank you for your confession.
Just for clarification, page 32 has a copy of his email. So that's no comment.
There is no comment, but it there is an email. Okay. Thank you. Dana?
The environmental determination for this project is a categorical exemption from CEQA pursuant to section 15303. Section is applicable and appropriate because the project will not exceed 10,000 square feet in floor area. Entitlement is found in section 16, which allows private schools in the AE-20 zone upon approval of a special use permit. And this is the, the project was noticed according to the law. Staff did receive one phone call from a neighbor who expressed concern regarding the issue of safety, primarily the adults dropping their children off in the morning. He wanted me to relay the information to the planning commission that he'd like the school to be more proactive during the morning hours when the children are being dropped off. He said that his trash can has been run over a few times and I guess the... Currently it is concerned to him. And he, I suggested that perhaps the school administrators could book a flyer in the kids' backpacks because we wanted the parents to be more careful. And he would approve that motion. Okay. So we may add that as a condition. General plan consistency, this project is in the urban development boundary and the urban area boundary for the city of Visalia. And the land use designation is rural residential. The project was found to be consistent with these applicable policies. And this is a screenshot of the area. This is the site here and there are, I guess, five parcels here that are in this unincorporated area, all surrounded by the city of Visalia.
Really?
Put that back up. I didn't...
My finger keeps...
Saw this, I was surprised this was, we were hearing this. I didn't even realize that was still in the county right there.
Yeah.
What is that road going up?
This is Acres.
Uh-huh.
Here. And this is Caldwell.
The church is right there in the corner.
This is a religious center. This is a church. This is a church. And I believe this is also...
Right. It's a holy crossing. I call that the holy crossing.
Yes, holy crossing, yes.
That was one of the other questions I asked Josh because I, I said, how come the city hasn't annexed that? And I, I didn't get a very good answer, but anyway.
They, they don't want those big, non-conforming parcels in the deal. What do they do with them? They don't know how to handle them.
Well, I think this one is conforming, so that's why I don't get it. They're always accusing us of not playing the ballgame like they'd like. That's not true.
And we already discussed that the city was sent an early consultation notice and they did reply with a no comment. And this is the location on the west side of Acres and just north of Caldwell. The site is zoned AE-20 and contains a single-family residence that was converted to a school in 2010. The surrounding properties contain residences and religious institutions. This is an aerial view and the site is right here. Google aerial view. And the additions, there would be two phases. The first addition would be a structure here in this area and later on, phase two would be an addition to the structure here. And then they would convert this area back here into playground, expand the playground As I, as was mentioned, this is the expansion of an existing preschool and the expansion would be in two phases. The first phase is to add this classroom here in the northwest corner, as I mentioned. And the second phase would be this addition over here. The school will have a total of seven classrooms with an office, break room and restrooms. Additional improvements to the project site would include the expansion of the playground and additional landscaping. The facility maintains a community care license through the Department of Social Services under the name A Place to Grow Montessori. The facility offers half-day and full-day preschool care. Special use permit number PSP 1044 was conditioned to allow a maximum of 84 students, children. Amendment would increase the student population to approximately 140 at any one time and the employee numbers to 20. Traffic analysis was performed for this expansion and it was determined that the threshold of 100 peak hour trips could not be met. Uh, traffic analysis was performed for this expansion, and it was determined that the threshold of one hundred peak hour trips could not be met. And here is a street view. The days and hours of operation are Monday through Friday, seven thirty AM to five thirty PM, and the existing thirty-six parking spaces are sufficient for this expansion.
So Dana, they're coming in on that. Could you back to the photo there?
Yes.
Pulling off of Acres and getting out of traffic and then coming in to that horseshoe-shaped drive?
Yes.
And they exit out the, that south side?
Correct. That is correct.
Drive by there all the time is very neat and clean.
And staff's recommendation is that your commission approve the categorical exemption and conditionally approve the special use permit number PSP sixteen dash zero two seven. That concludes staff's report.
Dana? Okay, I will now open the public hearing segment of this, uh, project as, um, could we? Have the proponent of the project would like to speak?
Nina Clancy, twenty-eight thirty-nine border links. I am the owner of A Place to Grow Montessori, and I'm here to answer questions. Other than that, that was a really old picture, by the way. It has a.
It is an old picture.
Thirty-six parking lot and all paved.
Yes. Uh, one moment, Mrs. Clancy, just in case, does anyone have any questions for?
Oh, I think it's a nice project, so.
Yeah, I've got, I have full confidence that Mrs. Clancy can do this because she's, she's operated, this type of an operation for many years.
You've got some cheerleaders over here.
Thirty-five years.
Okay, thank you.
Started when she was thirteen, I think.
Do we have any, um, opposition to this project? That would like to speak? Okay. I'm going to.
Just, oh, okay, go ahead and close it.
I'm going to close the public hearing now, and would any of our commissioners?
Uh, just to comment, I know that Acres Road is very busy if there would be a condition that, uh, and, and I don't know how you enforce it, that they just don't stop at Acres and kick them off at Acres and leave, park it out on the road rather than pulling in and getting it out, out of the traffic flow. I don't know how you enforce that, though.
I, I don't know. I can make a comment on that. I go up and down that road all the time, and I've never seen anybody do that. Uh, it's very convenient to pull, you just almost wouldn't because it's too easy to pull in and pull out.
Right, okay.
It sits way at the back, too.
Yeah, it sits back off the road, so I, I can't imagine. I mean, yeah, somebody crazy would do it, I guess, but.
Somebody in a hurry?
Yeah.
Uh, through the chair, uh, condition twelve speaks to that, that there will be no maneuvering onto the public right-of-way, and all parking and internal circulation should have been designed that vehicles enter and exit on the site.
Is that what that means?
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, is there any other comments from the mission? Okay, could we have, does anyone, would anyone like to make a motion?
Make the motion to, um, make the motion that we categorically exempt, consistent with California SEQA and state SEQA guidelines, uh, pertaining to new construction or conversion of small structures, and conditionally approve special use permit PSP sixteen dash zero two seven.
I'll second that.
And one moment, before we have the vote, could I ask a question? This is a perfect example. This is all ag, AE twenty, is it, around this? But is there any ag? Uh, that was, there is no ag operation?
Not on any of those, not on that island.
Okay, thank you. That was my question.
One gentleman who has a lot of farm animals, he said.
Okay, I didn't think so. Okay, thank you. Now, we could have the vote.
Dong?
Uh, yes.
Millies?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
BS?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Villiano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
It, it still bothers me, this is a done deal, but it still bothers me that the city doesn't annex this, like, a little parcel like that. They gave me some lame excuses because they don't have any money. I guess they're still telling people.
Nothing we can do about that, right?
They're used to having the developer pay, they didn't want to pay for it themselves.
Okay, thank you very much. Motion, I'm sorry, I did not, motion was approved. Now, for information and discussion items, we have Tulare County's illegal dumping program.
That's a program you can join?
Yes, I just heard about this. Very exciting.
Okay, can you hear me? Oh, you can hear me. Oh, okay. I'm a loud talker. I don't think I need the mic.
Dump my stuff in the evidence ditch.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, Senior Staff, and Counsel. Nicole Riley with the Tulare County Solid Waste Department. And I'm here today on invitation to discuss our illegal dumping program with you. Uh, with me I have Pervine Sandu. She's going to be my handy-dandy clicker through the PowerPoint. So, um, let's go ahead and begin. Uh, the illegal dumping program, so I'm going to give you a quick overview of the program and some of our, um, specific, I'll say, material types that we have. So the illegal dumping program began as a partnership between the Tulare County, um, Solid Waste Department, then RMA, uh, and the Sheriff's Department. It formed in nineteen ninety-eight, um, and it was to address a lot of the concerns in illegal dumping, um, in the unincorporated areas of the county. Uh, the, the program is funded through the solid waste, uh, enterprise funds operating budget. So what that means is the tipping fees that we receive at the landfill, and now franchise fees that we, uh, receive for the unincorporated trash collection, fund this program. So there are no general fund allocations supporting the program. Um, the program runs about two hundred thousand dollars in personnel and vehicle and equipment use per year. Uh, recently just purchased, I, I believe, a new vehicle for the program, ran about an additional twenty-three thousand dollars. Um, and we issue roughly seventy-six thousand dollars in fee waivers to the Sheriff's Department each year. So what that means is whatever they pick up on the side of the road or on properties, they bring back to our landfills, and we do not charge them for that. We eat that cost. Uh, just a rough idea of what, uh, what we get in the landfill from the illegal dumping programs per year. Roughly three hundred tons of tires, about thirteen hundred and sixteen mattresses. We got twenty refrigerators last year, and roughly four hundred and seventeen tons of refuse. So quite a bit is collected through that program. It's a very successful program. Okay, so as part of the illegal dumping programs, we sort of have two systems in place to address the types of dumping. Uh, we have a fee waiver system, and what that is, is when there is, um, illegal dumping on a property in an orchard, somebody's driveway, what have you. The Sheriff's Department doesn't, obviously for, for liability purposes, will not go onto that property and collect that waste. You know, we don't want to break a well or, or, you know, any, any, hit a tree, whatever, uh, what have you. So what happens is you, uh, uh, the resident will call the illegal dumping line or the Sheriff's Department directly and report that somebody has dumped on their property. Uh, typically, a deputy is supposed to go out and do an investigation, so it's just like any, any other sort of, um, I don't know what the word is.
Crime.
Crime to your property, right? Thank you. Um, so they go out and they'll do an investigation. A lot of times what they'll do is they'll coordinate with our department. We'll issue a fee waiver to the property owner. So they'll have to, of course, load everything up on a trailer themselves, but when they get to the landfill, we'll go ahead and, and allow them to dump that for free. Uh, but what we do is we keep a record of, um, how many waivers are issued, and we want to make sure that we kind of don't have repeat customers because at the end of the day, it's the property owner's right to make sure that their property is secure and that people aren't able to go on there and just dump it. So, um, we haven't, we've maybe had one or two instances in the last eight years that I've been there that we've said, okay, you've had enough fee waivers. What are you going to do to address your property? Um, and then the other issue that we have is, uh, with the fee waiver program is that the state of California requires that if you haul ten or more tires, that you be a licensed tire hauler with the state. Um, and what happens a lot is that folks will dump, you know, thirty, forty, even hundreds of tires on somebody's property. So what we do is we partner with the Health and Human Services Agency and kind of work together. There's, um, an amnesty program that they work with, and they will provide an exemption that will say, you can go ahead and bring those tires out to the landfill without having to get your, um, higher tall, tire hauler, uh, license. Then the next program that we have is the Sheriff Litter and Tire Abatement Program. So what this is, is any illegal dumping on the right-of-way of the roads within the unincorporated county, uh, you will call the Sheriff's Department or call the illegal dumping line, um, directly, and you will report, you know, what the material is, where it's located, right-of-way, uh, that it's a right-of-way. And what we do is we send out the Sheriff's Department with their inmate labor crew, and they will go ahead and pick that up and dispose of it at the landfill. Most of our fee waivers, the seventy-six thousand dollars a year, come from that particular abatement program. Um, very successful. So what we wanted to demonstrate to you is on the top left, that would be a right-of-way cleanup, and then on the bottom right, those are illegal dumping on properties. The middle picture I wanted to show you is what we sometimes get calls for in our, and this is why we work so closely with the Sheriff's Department, is that's just old trash that's accumulated on somebody's property. It's not illegal dumping. You just, you just bought property that had trash on it, and, and we, unfortunately, that's why we investigate, and we don't, we don't issue fee waivers for that, so. Okay. Okay, so specifically, it sounded like Commissioner Elliott wanted to know a little bit about tires and mattresses and, uh, how we deal with that. So tires, we get in the landfill about eight hundred tons of tires per year. A third of those tires are collected through the illegal dumping program. So again, no fees come in to support that. Um, and we talked a little bit about the waste tire, um, hauler program, but what that does is it really limits, um, sometimes we think that that, that is what causes people to illegally dump the tires, is that they don't realize that they can, you can bring them to the landfill, and we report to the state if you bring over ten or more tires. What the state chooses to do with that is not up to us, but I will say that the state isn't into prosecuting people for a one-time cleanup or, you know, a one-time haul. They will track you and make sure that you're not consistently bringing over ten or more tires to the landfill, and then require you to become a licensed, uh, tire hauler. But for the most part, they work very, very closely, um, with our partners in the ag community to make sure that we, you know, we're not just scaring people from dumping landfill, uh, tires at, at the landfill and ending with the side of the road. But the next piece that we have that really factors into the illegal dumping is the fee. Um, so let me give you some background on, on how we do our fees. Um, anytime we enter into a new agreement for a tire recycling program, which we have on-site, we go out for, um, a request for proposal to make sure that we're getting the best price for our customers. We don't want to overcharge if we don't have to. So our current agreement went into place November first and expires October thirty-first, um, and our recycler is Shamrock Recycling. They have been with us, um, I believe, for the last six years. Uh, we awarded a second contract to them, and we've had a very good working relationship. They actually work, um, on the Altamont landfill, uh, which is owned and operated by Waste Management in Altamont, and they take the tires up there and they process them on-site at the landfill, and they use them for, uh, landfill gas collection systems, leachate collection, and daily cover. Uh, and they produce various, uh, types of materials. So in the top right, you'll see, and that's actually ground up so that it can be used for fuel and like a bio, like a biomass facility or a cogeneration plant, so they can burn that off for fuel. And then you have the tire-derived aggregate that's on the left-hand side, and, and that's the material that's used for, um, landfill collection, daily cover, and leachate collection. But as part of that program, we obviously have to pay them a fee to come pick the material up and transport it and grind it. So that fee is a hundred and ninety dollars per ton that the landfill and the enterprise fund has to pay for. Um, so the way that we do that is through, obviously, tipping fees. And so our tipping fees are, what you'll see is our tipping fees aren't substantially higher than what we pay. We're probably aren't really recovering our costs. We're going through a whole cost analysis of our fees right now to kind of see where we need to be. But for bulk tires, anything over eight tires or more, we charge by the ton, and it's a hundred and eighty-five dollars a ton. So our processing fee on-site for us is about five dollars per ton. Uh, small, uh, car and truck tires, less than nine would be charged an individual rate, and that's two dollars per tire. And large truck tires, which would be, um, under five, would be ten dollars each, so. And then the illustration on the, on the bottom is just to show you our tire piles at the landfill. Okay, so our newest program is the mattress recycling program that we have on-site. From, uh, July first, two thousand fifteen through June thirty, thirtieth, two thousand sixteen, we collected fifteen thousand four hundred mattresses and box springs. A tenth of that were collected through illegal dumping. Uh, we have free disposal of mattresses. I think a lot of people are unaware of that. We're becoming more aware that people are unaware of that. So we're working very hard to put the word out there that, um, you can bring your mattresses to us for free, and your box springs for free. What we won't take for free are like the foam pads, um, but everything else is, is good. Um, and the reason that we're able to do that is through a program through, um, the Mattress Recycling Council and Buy Buy Mattresses, which began December thirtieth, two thousand fifteen. When you purchase a mattress now or a box spring, you're charged eleven dollars from the retailer. That eleven dollars comes back and provides this sort of program. Um, if you do have a mattress delivered to you, the retailer is required to take that from you free of charge, no additional cost, and they would dispose of it at a collection site like our landfill, um, in order to, um, uh, comply with the Buy Buy Mattresses and the Mattress Recycling Council law. So the mattresses are, uh, we, they have to be dry and non-mangled, and our poor guys that have to put them in the bins prefer that they be bedbug and, uh, fluid-free, but sometimes that's, or stain-free, sometimes that's not the case, and don't worry, I hear about it every day. But, um, it's, it's pretty gross, but they, they're working a really successful program out at the landfills. Um, and as you can see, those are our piles. I mean, fifteen thousand, fifteen thousand four hundred a year, it's just an insane amount that we are handling. I don't think anybody realized it would be this big, but, um, it is, is becoming a very successful program. Um, and as part of this program, if they are dry and unmingled, then eighty percent of the mattress can, can be recycled. So the steel, the foam, the wood, and the fiber. Um, the steel will be melted down and used in various, um, instances. The foam is used for carpet padding, and the wood they use for mulch, um, and then the fiber, they use a lot in industrial, like, as industrial filler. So if you have a filter, they'll use the fiber in the filter. Um, it's a pretty cool process, and, um, they've found great success with it. So we're really happy to be a part of it. And then, um, I know one of the concerns were that, um, maybe the fees are too high, we're getting a lot of, and that, that would be the reason that we're getting the illegal dumping. Um, with mattresses, that obviously isn't the case. I think it's just about us educating the public, which we're working on doing. Um, but what we do have are, um, on the valley floor and in the mountain areas, we have, um, two landfills, and we have, oh, I can't even remember anymore, seven transfer stations in the mountains. So April and October, the third full week of April and October each year, we have a half-price event on the valley floor at our landfills, and that is inclusive of everything except for recyclable material, because as you see, the price is just astronomical. Um, we can't eat the cost for that, but for the most part, we'll take a lot of the other illegally dumped material. You saw refuse was pretty high on the list, so anybody can bring their material in for half-price during those days. And we do that to coincide with Earth Day and Make a Difference Day. Um, it's, you know, just our do-good, um, program, and it, we're very successful for that. Uh, and then in the mountain communities, third full week of May and Sept- and September, we also have, um, a half-price event where people can come out to the landfill and dump for half-price. Again, C and D tires and refrigerators are excluded from that, um, but we have, um, what we found is that most people are bringing just a lot of junk that's accumulated, and it's not necessarily C and D or tires or refrigerators. Um, the second resource that we have is, um, as the Tulare County Franchise Agreement went into place last July, part of that agreement requires that our franchise haulers in the unincorporated area, so anybody who picks up trash in the unincorporated area, they're required to have two cleanup events per year. Now, they do cover very large geographic areas, so, um, two cleanups a year isn't, isn't a whole lot for some of their big areas, but they are required to rotate those areas so that each, each event or each year, it's in a different community within that area. So you have Tipton, or you can. So you have Tipton or you can have Al Paul the next time. And they provide that free of charge. So we definitely encourage our folks in the community to get in touch with those haulers and coordinate a cleanup event. And then that way, people can bring their bulky items. It's up to three yards per person, cubic yards per person, that they can take free to those events and drop them off. So there are definitely some resources. Another thing that we see is around Christmas time, the Christmas trees get dropped off on the side of the road or thrown into somebody else's bin. So as part of our franchise agreement, for two weeks after the holiday season, after Christmas, they will pick up your Christmas trees free of charge. And that's a requirement of the franchise agreement as well. And that is just a really brief overview of our program and just two of our items that we have that cause us major headaches. But do you have any questions or comments for us?
Go ahead, you're the chair.
Can I? Did I hear on the radio that maybe there's a new program for televisions?
We haven't had anything passed yet. There may be something in the works. I just don't... We just don't know where that's going to end up right now. But it could be, and if it was, it would be the same sort of program now as mattresses and batteries and tires and paint, where the fee is tacked on at the production level and then the end-user.
And my other question, comment is, you were saying that after a while, after so many phone calls, then maybe you go to them and say, mm, you've been calling too much. But you do realize that people that are on main thoroughfares, they get it every weekend.
Absolutely, absolutely. We totally understand that. But, and that is something that we've addressed years ago. And you have to forgive me, I can't remember the exact language. But I believe that there's something in our ordinance code or building code that requires a property owner to be responsible for making sure that nobody has access to their property. So we can only do so much. But we definitely, like I said, once in eight years, that's nothing. We don't like to turn away, especially our farmers, because it happens so often with our farmers.
Okay, thank you.
There's no way to recycle tires?
Yeah, so if you go back to...
You missed it.
You missed it.
I said you dropped it off. It didn't say what they did with it.
So you're right, it is a stain up there. So what they can do, many things with tires. So you have the tire-derived aggregate, which is usually used on-site for processing. And that's used for daily cover, landfill gas, or leachate collection. They'll shred it, which is the top-right picture, for fuel purposes. So they'll burn it and cogit. But in addition to that, they can use it for roads. They can use it in... There are so many. They like to use it as bark, like they'll shred it and use it as bark for playgrounds. So it's definitely... There are a lot of incentives to use the recycled tires.
Kings County Offices has all their flower beds with the tires.
There are lots of them.
We're not burying tires anymore, right?
We absolutely do not bury tires, absolutely not. They unearth themselves and cause us headaches later in life. So part of... It was the Tire Waste Management Act in, I think, nineteen eighty-nine or nineteen ninety, really discouraged the use of that. And then it was reiterated in two thousand. So we don't bury any tires at the landfills. It is all recycled.
How many landfills does the county have and where are they located?
The county has two landfills. We have the Teapot Dome landfill, and that is in Porterville. And we have the Visalia landfill, which is on Road, Avenue three twenty-eight. The entrance is on three twenty-eight and Road eighty.
Is Teapot considered the mountain one or do you have another one?
No, Teapot would be the valley floor. So the mountain, we have Camp Nelson. And we have Springville, Balance Rock, Pine Flat, Badger, Missinland. Canadian Meadows. And Canadian Meadows is basically a bin for people to put their waste. So no bulky items are accepted there.
Now, I would like to publish this in the newspaper up in Three Rivers. Can I get some of these figures emailed to me so I could use the graphics of the...
Certainly. Yep, I think Praveen has your contacts, so we'll go ahead and...
Okay, so can you provide me with the name and number on that?
Yes, I can.
Not very good. I think the thing we need to move toward, we got to figure out a way with the tires. Because there's so many tires sitting in rural areas that aren't identified. And people are still pitching them just to save the two bucks, so. There must be a way to get them into the... I mean, maybe charge at the point of sale on tires. I mean, they have a recycling fee.
They do, don't they? Isn't there a recycling charge?
But we still got to pay two bucks to get rid of them.
At the landfill, so unlike the mattress paint programs, the tire is not a public program. It's more for the tire facility that's selling you the tires so that they can dispose of the tires. But I wouldn't be surprised if that's not coming down from the state. I mean, the state of California is constantly...
Sounds like they could do it.
We are always looking, you know, for good ideas. Like I said, at a hundred and ninety dollars per tonne to recycle them and making sure that our recycling programs pay for themselves, that's kind of been our biggest struggle is tires. So if anybody has any solutions or recommendations, we're certainly willing to look at them. It's just, you know, two dollars a tire.
One thing we have in Three Rivers are areas where people have pushed appliances and refrigerators over cliffs. So when you bring a refrigerator or a stove, what does that cost to them?
They are fifteen dollars apiece. Fifteen dollars with, and refrigerators have a seven-dollar special handling fee. We would have to remove the freon.
See, that's why they're going over the cliff.
Freon is hazardous.
They're still doing it, too, so.
Dennis Lehman, our Chief Building Inspector, heads code compliance. And each year, he identifies certain properties that were, you know, it's just a trash heap. And they go in and do a great clean... I mean, he's got limited funds, but they clean up some of the worst. So if you call Dennis Lehman, whatever that department that is, building, code compliance, he will go look at it.
We have a property like that right on the highway as you go into Sequoia Park. And I can tell when Dennis goes out there because all the piles are rearranged. They haven't done much with the stuff, but they look deader anyway.
And certainly, if you see those, you know, we encourage you to contact the Illegal Dumping Line and we'll work to get that stuff cleaned up. It is, you know, sometimes it becomes a little difficult for them to get to the properties and clean them up. And so then the only other thing that we can do is issue a fee waiver. But we certainly want to help as much as we can.
Can the Health Department help you out? Because tires are a great place to breed mosquitoes.
Yeah, they need to be moved.
I mean, we work very closely with them, but unfortunately, they're pretty restricted in their funds. There are a lot of programs out there for illegal dumping for farmers. There are cleanup events for tires. So it's just kind of us working with our partners and encouraging them to apply for those grants that unfortunately, we can't apply for. But we do work very closely with them.
You know, I would think maybe air pollution should jump in on this. Because in our, out in the Tipton, Pixley area, they're being burned. It's the couches and the mattresses are set on fire. And it's just so nasty, you know? But that's what's happening, is they're being burned. So you would think maybe air pollution would jump on to add incentive.
Come up with a program, yeah.
Hector's going to give us an insight on this.
Who's the chair if I may? A little about air pollution. They do have an illegal burning hotline themselves, just like an illegal dumping hotline. And yeah, the only material you can burn is, and even then, it's been really, really restricted, is Ag material with an Ag permit on a burn date with permission. If you don't do all four of those, illegal burn. No, and then it has to be... It also has to be manned at all times. You can't just leave it vacant.
Yes, but what I was saying is the people that dump them set them on fire.
Yeah, the only thing that they would do, there's illegal burn. What they'll do is they'll call the Fire Department, and the Fire Department will extinguish it. And unfortunately, I don't know what they do as far as like if it's on a farmer's property, then they'll build a farmer. The Fire Department will build a farmer. But the illegal burn, that, I mean, that's a clear violation of their APCD rule.
Right.
But illegal burns by someone who dumped it, that's crime. You know, that then goes beyond the purview of the Valley Air District.
Real hard to catch them.
It's hard to catch them, yeah.
They're the dumper.
But they do have... It is illegal to burn anything, but...
It's cheaper to throw some gasoline on there and burn it all.
Well, we got to keep those numbers out in front of people because a lot of people tell me they see this activity and they're... And they call the sheriff and the sheriff responds an hour or so later, but by then, it's...
It's, yeah. So what we also do have throughout the county, and I'm sorry, I don't have those locations for you, is we have about twenty-four signs. We had a grand jury request several years ago about the illegal dumping program. And one of the outcomes was that it was more signage throughout the county. So we've placed in very high-traffic areas that gets a lot of the receivable... Illegal dumping. We have placed signs up with phone numbers to call to report as well. You know, it's just working very closely with our partners, with the Sheriff's Department, with Health and Human Services. And we are working really hard to strengthen those relationships and improve the program. So we've reached out to them over the past several months to try to come up with better ways to work the program. So certainly, this comes at a good time that we can figure out what we need to do next.
What do you do with recycled oil? I notice there's companies now that are selling recycled oil that's been filtered. Where does that go?
That I do not have a good response for you. The Tulare County Environmental Health Department operates the Household Hazardous Waste Center, and they would certainly be a good resource for that, but I'm unaware.
Those cleanups, too, they have the seasonal cleanups. You can take the oil there if you have it. But they have a regular center, it's in Visalia, that'll take the oil. And they don't charge for that.
They don't charge, it's free. You have to bring your proof of residency within, anywhere in Tulare County. And there's a facility in Visalia off of Kane, in the Visalia City Corporation Yard. And then the city of Porterville also operates.
Oh, anytime, you could take it to those places.
They do have specific hours, I believe Saturdays from like eight to one o'clock.
I'd take mine to Ed's house. He lives in the country. I know when it's not home, doesn't mind.
You're the guy, huh?
Yeah.
Now I know when to call the sheriff.
Call him. That was great, thank you so much.
If I may, Nicole, when you talked about the requirements for the haulers to have a couple clean pickup times events a year, how do you go about notifying the community or...
Usually, the way that that occurs is through contact with the hauler. So the community will reach out to the hauler and ask them to do an event for them. What we have started working on, and we just put a game plan together, is a lot of the notifications, at the very least for our half-price week, to go out and allow the local publications, newspaper. We've had the Board of Supervisors start doing press releases. But the hauler is required, I believe, by franchise to notify.
Yes, they notify quarterly of pickup events. They normally will host more than two events, but they're required to hold at least two.
So they notify through their monthly bills or something?
Yeah, they're supposed to.
What I was gonna say is the community, a number of the rural communities have town councils and information going through there. If you present to them or coordinate timing and notification through that, that will really get out to the community. So they... Much more than a press release and a newspaper, they're not gonna... But the community, town councils are notified.
All right, absolutely.
You know, newspapers, not just because John's here, but, you know, you que a Commonwealth. People live there, everybody wants to read it because they know their neighbors.
Well, our cleanups, our cleanups out where we are, they're at the Lemon Coke Fire Station. And we do get the word out in our community, but there's a lot of outlying communities, they don't have a newspaper anymore, and it's tough to get those notices out. But ours, I think ours does a good job. And I will say, our people in Three Rivers are hugely into recycling. They'll do it. So they just got to know where and what's involved.
The hardest thing about recycling is where you take it.
There are definitely resources for where you take it. We have Earth 911. Buy Buy Mattresses will give you where you can go drop off your mattresses. And I'm trying to think. CWMA Recycles is a website that will probably go away here pretty soon as our JPA disbanded. But that's also a valuable source of resources that we will actually probably glean from. And we also have our website, which is tularecountyrrecycles.com, that anybody can go to and find out where you can take a lot of your stuff.
Ms. Gourvera, do you have a comment?
And this could ultimately affect our sequel analysis. What's the status of increasing the diversion rate? I understand there was some legislation being kicked around where they might do that.
Yeah, so actually, the state of California has decided that by 2020, that seventy-five percent of all of the material, seventy-five percent of material will be diverted from the landfill. So you should be recycling seventy-five, five percent of everything that comes out of your household. So what that means is, one, unfunded mandates for us to meet that compliance. And I think we all are very familiar with those. In addition to that, we have now organics that went into place with AB eighteen thirty-six. And that's requiring, we have a rollout every year that's requiring, if you have four cubic yards of waste, you have to have organics recycling in your home. And so, again, another unfunded mandate. So we are just working towards improving our programs and kind of, I would say, rebranding our department so that we can now work more toward recycling rather than just landfilling waste. But it's definitely been a struggle. But that went into place, two thousand fourteen was mandatory commercial and business recycling. And our first leg of the organics recycling went into place in July of two thousand fifteen?
Oh, act...
October twenty fifteen.
What's our diversion rate now?
So the county's diversion rate were currently about sixty-five percent. So we're not bad. The statewide seventy-five percent, the seventy-five percent goal is statewide. There are no necessarily regulations or mandates telling us that we have to reach that goal as an individual jurisdiction. But obviously, our goal as the county is to, you know, comply with the state and do the best that we can. So we have to make sure that all of these programs and these very costly programs, a hundred and ninety dollars per tonne, I think that's probably our most expensive program, that we have ways to fund that with, you know, building cell construction, which is not an easy feat in and of itself. But we are working towards seventy-five percent as best as we can.
Do they give you credit for all the dairy manure that's put back out on the farmland? That's a cycle.
There are a lot of things that sometimes here in the rural community that we, when the folks from Sacramento come down, that we are like, you don't understand. We can't track every farmer that, you know, mulches their own green waste. You know, you want us to, you want to see recycling from this, but they're using it on-site. So do you want every property owner to report that to us on a monthly basis? And how much money are you going to give us to be able to actually, you know, go through all of that? So we do have a struggle with those sorts of things. It would be the same as any aluminum can recycling center. We don't actually track those, but they do report to the state. We'll see what California wants in the next few years, it may come to that, but right now...
But what do we do with styrofoam and like plastic packing and plastic bags? None of those are recyclable, is that correct?
There are very, very limited market for styrofoam. There are some sources that will do it, and they will reprocess them into like plates for cafeterias.
Or even picture frames.
Yeah, yeah, picture frames as well. But they're very, it's very expensive. And bags, right now, there is no good solution. So that's why you've seen the bag.
Actually, some stores, like Home Depot or like Save Mart or whatever, will have big containers that you can take your old plastic bags. So even like your packaging from like water bottle cases or whatever, any type of plastic, you can put in there, like plastic packaging, and they recycle it. The market for it, not so great, but they do have them.
Well, styrofoam's on the way out, too. It's going to be outlawed within a few years.
Can't they make those plastic bags to where they'll decompose? Reasonable like the time?
So the problem that you find a lot with even some of the compostable bags, you see those on the market right now, the unfortunate part is that they're not, they don't, they're not degradable to the extent that compost facilities even will accept them. And that's what we've seen with the, you know, the...
Plastic.
Plastic, like the utensils that they make out of recycled material, they just don't decompose the right way. So there've been a lot of struggles with that in the market.
Good stuff.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It was very informative. Thank you for asking for that. That was a good idea. Do we have a planning director update?
Just briefly, the, I know that Fresno put out their crop report. We're looking at Tulare County to put out its crop report on August thirtieth. Fresno was down by almost half a billion dollars. Frought in prices of certain goods. But just so you know, there'll be a presentation of the board on August thirtieth. This afternoon, Dennis Lehman and myself are going to tour the Tipton, the Tipton Cheese Plant. We're with developers who are bringing in that ultra-high-temperature milk processing facility. So we're working with them this afternoon.
So we're working with them uh, this afternoon. Safety Element is moving forward, Hector. We'll be releasing the draft supplemental environmental impact report um, uh, next week, I believe.
Right?
Yep. And uh, and we're starting our outreach with Complete Streets that will be going on for the next forty-five days to some of the rural communities uh, that are on our list. There's about nine that are gonna be updated uh, with Complete Streets, and that will be mo- moving forward. And then I believe uh, Aaron has a little update for the public speaker last week, Peggy Hunt, that came to the podium and had some questions about uh, the, the property adjacent with the, with the well being drilled and whatnot, so I think he has an update for you.
Uh, for the commission, um, we reached out to the applicant's agent, uh, Donna Shamling. Um, she stated that the trees were removed on the site because they were getting aged. It, it wasn't necessarily for development purposes. Uh, but to give this planning commission an update, they are still moving forward on the environmental impact report. It's been over two years in process, so hopefully, maybe we'll see it soon. Uh, uh, further update, the uh, well that was uh, mentioned, uh, was permitted through environmental health. Uh, the setback requirements for it are twenty-five feet um, from the property line, uh, on the front property line, and it's uh, five feet from all other property lines. The uh, setback to another well is fifty feet. Um, as far as the APNs located on the site, there are three. Uh, this one was adjacent to the uh, Peggy Hunt's property, and that one did contain the well. So, uh, we will respond to Peggy directly through a, a letter, um, to her address, uh, as soon as we have all our concrete answers, but uh, to, to address her, her main questions and what she was gearing towards, everything is on the up and up, and they are not moving forward illegally towards development.
And just to clarify, it's an irrigation well that, that the permit's for, yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
I think this one...
Uh, this is big, even though it's small. Uh, the county's in the process of trying to use some state funding to build a, a intertie and a connect between Yedim and Seville along State Route two oh one, uh, so they can have a reliable water source. Uh, I believe Seville has its own water distribution system into that, as Eric Coyne will always say, is older than the Titanic, which it really is old. I mean, some of the piping in there is, is still made out of wood, so it's, 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 it's aged. So that distribution, the, the intent is to, to also get money to replace that distribution system in total over time. Add a couple of new wells, add storage, make it more reliable, make it safer, uh, because it has occasional problems with the quality of it. So we're trying to do that, but we got a big W this week when we had an opportunity to work with uh, we've been working, let me go back a little bit, sponsored by Department Water Resources. We have to get an okay from Cal, uh, Calfish and Wildlife, because it's right adjacent on either side of portions of the, the right-of-way, or the, the highway, State Route two oh one, is uh, uh, Stone Corral Ecological Reserve, the SER, and in that thing is known presence-
Could you have those people go outside, because I'm...
Oh.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mrs. Gruber.
The Stone, the Stone Corral thing has California tiger salamander and endangered species. Known presence there. It's there. That's where the career hangs out. So, uh, typically, Calfish Wildlife says, if you're gonna do something next to one of these sensitive areas, you gotta have at least fifty-foot setback. I go, come on. The Caltrans right-of-way is fifty feet, and then as soon as that ends, your fence over here for that northern portion, your fence over here for the southern portion, so it's like, we don't have space. Now, the thing about the CTS, the California Tiger Salamander, he likes to live burrows that are dug by squirrels. And those burrows can also occupy by our other little friends, the kit fox, or uh, the burrowing owl. Oh, man, I got a dilemma here. So, we're thinking, holy cow. Initially, Calfish and Wildlife wanted us to do either an EIR or mitigated NEGDEC, because they said they're present, you have to have that document, you're gonna have to take, it's a take permit. You got this whole kid caboodle, you have to do a, a protocol-level survey, quarter of a million dollars just to do the protocol-level survey. Quarter of a million bucks. And that protocol says you have to have above-average rainfall, which is defined as ten percent, for two consecutive years. Four years of drought, hello? You know, we had normal rainfall this year. Even if we successfully did ten percent above normal, I had to do it again for the next year, and the clock restarts, so I can't see, you know, I can't skip a year. So it takes about a quarter of a million dollars to do that, a two-year effort. Meanwhile, these two communities need this water. So, we finally convinced them that, no, we're gonna just stay on the right-of-way, we're just, we're not even gonna touch any of this. We're gonna be mostly on the paved road if we can, to the extent that we can, that Caltrans allows us, and they said, fine, that's good. So they said, they can't write it down, because we're lead agency, but they basically told us, we concur with your categorical exemption based on the emergency drought declaration by the governor, which is, had been, has, and we have a resolution here that's continually reaffirmed at the county level, saying we have a drought emergency, continuously being affirmed, so we can continue to qualify for emergency relief. Now, the important thing about the governor's office doing that, they suspend SEQA, which is huge, you know, so I got, we got that little W there. Now, so we got Department Water Resources agrees, Cal, uh, Calfish and Wildlife agrees. Now we gotta convince Caltrans that we need to put it on your road. Can't do it on your shoulder, we got to put it on the paved surface, because Calfish and Wildlife said there's absolutely no plausible presence of that critter or its habitat affecting the other critters on your disturbed surface, paved surface, compacted road shoulder. So we went back and forth with Caltrans for a bit, and, and, and two days ago, we got the, we, we got the W. Caltrans agreed with our SEQA stuff, that we don't have to do any of that. They agreed, even though it's out of their purview, they agreed that Calfish and Wildlife's determination that biological resources would not be impacted, that was their biggest concern. Now they're gonna allow us to do that, that, that pipeline between Yedim and Seville. So, that's big, you know, because the, there, the, the, there's, Caltrans had asked, why can't you get the water anywhere else? And we're like, oh, because the nearest community is Cutler Rosey about seven miles away. You know, and, and, and this is only affecting about fifty-five hundred linear feet of their area, and about a, uh, you know, on a two, three-foot-wide trench, about, you know, five feet deep or something like that, you know, so it's, it's, it's huge. They didn't want us to put it on the center line, because they didn't want us to block the road for a couple of days. You know, it's like, wow, okay. So we put it on the center of the northbound lane. I mean, on the north lane, which is the westbound lane, away from the, where the, the, the tires of the heavy trucks run over, so away from that, that, that path, right in the middle of the north bound, of the north lane for fifty-five hundred linear feet. And we got something that I don't know if anybody else has ever gotten, and Aaron may know, he's worked with the agencies a lot. Uh, we actually got a written on letterhead by the regional director of Calfish and Wildlife. A don't impact, uh, a no-comment letter, if you will. They, if they say we have no comment on this, that means you're clear of all our, our biological and wildlife concerns. So that was a really huge win, and, you know, and I want to acknowledge Public Works' effort in doing that stuff. More importantly, Eric Coyne was the broker in all of this, you know. We may be the technical background behind it, but Eric Coyne was the one who guided the conversations and talked to the people that be, that, that would make these decisions, and it was a very, very successful effort, and I think we're gonna save the county a lot of money and a lot of time, and we're gonna be able to provide a reliable water source to this uh, community. I think the pipeline is planned to go in probably next June or July. Oh, and then we have to do it in hottest time of the year, because that's when the critter is, 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 uh, is, I guess, resting, as they call it. Uh, he goes out there in July, he's gonna turn to bacon, I'm sorry, you know, it's too hot, you know, so... So we had all these conditions that we had to meet with Caltrans, and one of them is, no vernal pools, have water, biolog- a, a biologist out there on-site, uh, silt fences, you know, uh, just everything, you know, and, and, and you have to do it when it's the hottest time possible. Okay, I don't think the crews are gonna like that, but yeah, that was, that was big for us. And that's the stuff that goes on, that, that people don't see about, because then we finally are able to get all of our facts, get all of our, our negotiations done, and we're making, uh, we're protecting everybody. You know, we're protecting the, the critter, we're, we're protecting the uh, people by being, being able to provide, you know, the water supply, reliable, dependable, you know, and, and it's sustainable water, so it's, everything is consistent with the objectives that every agency wants to have accomplished, and we did it all by working, you know, at, at our level. So, that's my big brag for the...
Great.
And to answer Hector's question, in only one other case in Fresno, did they ever uh, do that type of letter for this region.
Great. It was, that's a success story. I mean, it definitely is, yeah.
It's finally putting this to good use, you know, because we can get frustrated too, because we gotta do so much to protect so much, and if I can't, I can't even identify something like that as mitigation measure to do protections that we're gonna do, because they're really not. They're, they're, they're like project design features. You know, everybody says, like air pollution, you gotta water it and bring down dust, that's mitigation. No, 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 that's a requirement. I have to, so if I, when you write a categorical exemption, if you use the word mitigation, you're dead. You've automatically promoted that to, to NEGDEC or mitigating NEGDEC. So I had to convince Calfish and Wildlife to write, you know, project design feature, because that's what it is. It's an avoidance, it's a minimization technique that, that, that they're gonna require, that we have to do, that Caltrans will say, you gotta this, you gotta that. You gotta do it anyway. It's not a mitigation, it's a requirement or a standard, something like that, so...
Thank you, yes. Good, good pat on your back.
That was fun. That was, that was, it's good working with these agencies, because one day, they're gonna need me, you know, and, and they're gonna... We work together well that way, and, and, and just an FYI, the, uh, one of the regional managers there, at a lower level than the tire regional manager, she used to work at the Valley Air District. She's my friend. So you have this network of folks go to other agencies, and you have a good working relationship with them. Now they know this is, this is something that, that, you know, we're supporting strongly, it's very important, and the humanity comes out. Not just protecting your purview, which is wildlife, fish and wildlife, but they're also seeing the importance of, of, of us as the county trying to provide, you know, a resource to, uh, you know, disadvantaged community.
Thank you. Mr. Washman, do we have anything else?
I think we're good.
Okay, thank you. Meeting adjourned until August twenty-fourth.